So I'll be taking some notes as well. So if I pause periodically, that's why. And I would ask the village clerk to take the roll.
I'm sorry, I'll need just a moment.
You finish that and I'll do the roll. Zappa?
Here.
I wanted that roll on here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, 7:05.
Waylon?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
O'Brien, Burglin?
Here.
Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Larson here. Okay. All right. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of September 2. And secondly, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting of September 12.
I will move that we approve the board meeting minutes of September 2, 2008.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a correction or a question.
Okay.
Also in attendance were the village attorney, Bill Nicolai, et cetera, et cetera. And if you go over to page 3, right in the middle, to the immediate right of the hole in the paper.
You're on page 3?
Yes. You'll see it begins with Tom Schumacher, and I just wondered if both of them were here.
Yeah, he was.
Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't, and that's why I questioned.
Yeah, we tried to keep him off, but we couldn't do it.
No, because Tom's name was not included in the also in attendance word.
He came in later.
He came in later.
Thank you. Thought I quoted.
Any other questions or corrections? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Chair, entertain a motion then to approve the minutes from the special board meeting of September 12.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or corrections? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Comments from the floor? When it rises to the podium, introduce yourself.
404 Sixth Street, North. I've got one problem with your grassy lot over here.
Mm-hmm.
The water is running the wrong direction.
Where's it running?
It runs from the center, runs to my yard. Runs from the center, runs to the northwest corner.
I thought we had sloped that. We could re-
I think the best we can do is acknowledge Jim's comment and take it up at Public Works.
I talked over with Mark last week or whatever. He said, "Well, that's low on that side." I said, "Well, that's not my problem," you know? I mean, the water should run towards the street or whatever, you know? So.
Okay.
It's not bad. I mean, light rain like today, it runs that way, and you get those heavy, heavy rains, and it really runs that way, so. That was the first question. The second one is, I would like to know down the way, what's going to happen with the fish pond that's down at the end of the lot? I mean, they're gonna do away with the fish pond, or?
The fish pond.
Curb settled there. Again, that's another one we'll have to talk about at Public Works. We have Exmaline for curb and gutter replacement. I'm not sure where they are in doing that sort of thing right now.
I know that's, but I'm just bringing it up so it's on the agenda for-
We'll put on Public Works.
-next summer or whatever.
It'll be on Public Works' agenda probably this month.
Kind of a side point, curb and gutter replacement is a line item in our budget. And I know at Public Works, we're looking at that one, and due to the tightness of the budget, I don't recall if that was eliminated or not. But regardless, what Jim's talking about was part of the reclamation of that lot. So some of those things, that's, in my opinion, an item outside the curb and gutter line item, curb and gutter replacement line item. But Jim's right, the drainage was supposed to not go towards his lot, so we'll have to take a look at that.
Okay.
I'm sure we can correct it pretty easily.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Jim.
My name is Karen Crowley, and I'm from 719 Summers Point North. I'm a poll worker here, and during the elections, first of all, I want to thank the board for this wonderful facility that we have now for voting.
Oh, we thank you for paying for it.
And especially, I want to put a top priority, the bathroom. But there is a reason why I'm here, to not really complain, but to present a problem. And that is the lighting over the voting booths. We have had several seniors complain, and I don't know how many of you are, were at that middle age where your arms weren't quite long enough, and you could read menus if it was a light restaurant, brightly lit, but if it isn't, you couldn't read it. Well, that's what happens with the print on the ballots. I think people are having trouble reading them. Now, we know that, we've heard that it would be just too costly, but we did, if you're going to complain, you better have a solution. And the women who were here that day, we thought, because they come down and there are those side boards, we could put some kind of clip-on lights up there, and there is an outlet right there, and we could put strip lighting. But it does seem like it should be a problem that should be addressed before the next election, because it's going to be crazy here. And even people having trouble reading, the ballots are going to slow the process down. So if that could be taken care of, we as the poll workers would really appreciate it. Can I respond to that?
Do the voters, or do you guys open up that last booth, number 7, back there? I did notice that the last elections that we have had here, that that wasn't used because we have the handicap booth right there.
That's more easily-
Sure.
...lit, you know, so that is an alternative. But we do have a lot of people using that now, so it's not the solution.
What I'm asking is, do we get six or do we get seven of these temporary portable lights?
You know, I really, I don't know. Laurie would have to tell me, because I can't.
Can I respond to both your? The last election was a very small one.
Yeah.
And so we didn't need all the voting booths.
Right.
We will need them all for this next one with the presidential. But I was kind of thinking about the issue and remembering that we had track lighting that didn't get installed in the bathroom. And I had Mark go down and pull one up, and it does match very nicely in here. So we have eight bulbs that could point down there. It would just be the cost of the electrical work, and he said he would get an estimate, so maybe that's something that the board will consider doing.
If we're going to do it, we have, was it 28 days?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, four weeks.
Okay.
But thank you very much for your time.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
That's one of those little things you don't see until you start using.
Until you use it right.
Okay. Plan Commission, I see there's no one from the Plan Commission here, so there won't be any chair update. Finance Committee. Finance, if you look at the claims.
I have a question for Bill.
Sure.
How is it coming looking at the ordinances regarding the mission activity?
We'll have a draft next month. We're going to come in with something.
The Finance Committee has recommended that we pay our bills, and so I would make a motion to approve the September 2008 non-recurring claims totaling $36,744.24. I would entertain a second.
I'd so move that we approve the September 2008 non-recurring claims totaling $36,744.24.
Okay. Questions to the claims? Seeing that, we'll do a roll call, we'll start this in. Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. George?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Next item, the annual computer service agreement. We used to have a computer service agreement with a local provider. That agreement expired in, I believe, August of 2008. And the staff is recommending that we do not renew that agreement. Rather just carry that dollar amount in the budget and then use it as needed. If we don't, obviously, if we don't need it, we'll just have it. So I would make a motion to continue what is now the current practice, which is not to have a formal agreement.
Second.
Second? As I mentioned, the staff had looked at that, looked at the cost of the agreement, looked at the actual utilization. They've identified a couple of other, a couple of providers that can take care of their needs. In fact, now they've got two that they could call, so they're comfortable with it. So I certainly don't have any trouble with it. They're the ones that have to deal with the consequences of the machines not working more so than I do. So I certainly take their word for that. Any other comments or questions or concerns about that? Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Joint Library Capital Agreement Project, update only. I really don't have anything to update since- what did I miss? Oh, Police Department, in administrated for copy release agreements. Thanks, George. I gotta draw an arrow here. Okay. Our, like most organizations, we rent our copy machine. And so this is, what we're being asked to do is to approve a new lease, which would be for 48 months. It's a couple dollars per month more than the previous one, but we get two new machines, two new Laniers. The cost would change from $227 a month to $249. The maintenance agreement is $435 per year on the one, $259 per year on the other. They both, we wouldn't, we'd pay additional maintenance if we went over certain usages, and we talked about that. And they're all, it's attached and should be in front of you. The, I think Mark and Gloria have both done a very good job of looking at, you know, does it make sense to buy or lease? Number one, the recommendation is to lease. If we're going to lease, how would you set the usages so that you end up with a reasonable monthly lease? When you think about leasing two Laniers, which are pretty high-speed, very durable machines, for $249 a month for both of them, that's a pretty good number. So it is the recommendation of the Finance Committee that we, I'm just looking for it. That we approve the, what do we call it? The computer service agreement with E.O. Johnson. Is it E.O.?
Yes, the fourth.
We move to approve the proposed 48-month lease agreement with E.O. Johnson with a monthly charge of $249 and an annual maintenance agreement of .08. That's eight tenths of a cent per copy with a one-time travel charge of $35. So that is my motion, as well as the recommendation from the-
Second.
Finance Committee. Any questions on that? Jim, you found that to be pretty comparable to the kind of agreements you're dealing with?
No, after having interviewed it on finance, it's a wonderful plan, and I have no question it's the best value for the village. I would strongly recommend it.
Okay.
And just emphasize one thing that's not really in the motion is that what we're talking about, a 48-month lease, is for a new machine, for new machines. And the first time I read it, that wasn't that clear, so I want to make sure that that's clear for everyone.
Okay.
In addition, all labor for hookups, networking, computer connections, training, it's a good plan.
Okay. With that, we'll do a roll call vote, since it's a spending decision. Start again. Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark? Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
As I mentioned before, I really don't have any update on the capital project. People will soon be deciding whether or not they want to fund the library project. And hopefully, you know, the information we have given people at our last meeting would give them at least some additional insight as to the nature of the project, as well as how much the cost of that would be. And then residents can decide for themselves whether or not they want to fund that. The next item, employee health insurance contributions, as well as the employee health insurance quotes. We really don't have enough information to discuss either one of those two topics intelligently right now. So the Finance Committee tabled discussion on those. So I will therefore entertain a motion to table both items E and F until our next meeting. Is there a second to that? Any questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. 2009 budget, we've had a couple of meetings on that, just for the sake of the listening audience. We started out with about a $200,000 problem. We're down to probably about a $30,000 issue left. We've got one more meeting scheduled for October 20th, which I think is a Monday, at 3 o'clock here at Village Hall. So if anybody would like to attend, they're certainly free to do so.
Is that a full board meeting?
No, just finance.
Well, then, some of us aren't free to come, then, to attend.
Anyone's free to attend, it's an open meeting. It's a public meeting.
I know, but I was going to come to the last one, but I couldn't.
No. What I ask is that if we're going to have a finance meeting-
Oh, I see.
If you want to have a board meeting, let's announce it as a board meeting.
Last meeting, we kind of left with the assumption that if-
Yes.
The non-committee heads wanted to, they could, and I was going to show up, and I was-
My comment, which is anyone who would like to attend, would be anyone in the listening audience who would like to come.
You could. You could notice it as a Finance Committee meeting, but you could put a note that other board members may attend, and it's possible quorum, and the board would be there, but it would, they would only be there for purposes of observing and the finances.
Well, there's a quorum going to be there anyway.
And when you know that the additional board members aren't going to come, I was told that I should just notice it as a board meeting, because that's what it is.
Let me repeat the important issue. The important issue is Finance Committee is going to meet on October 20th, October 20th at 3 o'clock. It will take one more whack at the budget, and then in November, it comes back to the full board. So any in the listening audience who would like to attend are free to do so. Board members may not. Thank you.
Oh, no, then I can't.
That's fine. All right. Public Works. Joe is not here tonight. I'm moving on. Public Works Committee, Joe is not here. I see there was nothing on there other than chair update. Mark, did you have anything from the last meeting that you want to talk about?
No.
Okay. Public Safety? George?
We don't have anything to vote on, there's no recommendations. The minutes from the last meeting are in your board packet. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and I'll do what I can. You'll also notice the chief's report is in there. If you have any questions about the detective position or patrol officer vacancies, we can entertain that. I do want to draw your attention, however, to the fact that the Public Safety meeting has been moved to October 16th at 5:30 p.m. due to some conflicts. This is not, usually we meet the second Thursday of each month, but this month it will be the 16th at 5:30 p.m.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Good. Public Welfare.
How's our welfare? Welfare, welfare is great. I got the pleasure of going on a field trip with Mark Shilken from Waste Management up to Ladysmith, Wisconsin, to tour our state-of-the-art cookie cutter disposal facility, and it was absolutely wonderful. Be assured that the garbage that we throw in our cans is generating electrical power for the better part of Ladysmith and surrounding villages. It was really a cool experience.
Do they get it for free? Go ahead. Do the residents, are the users of that electricity getting it for free?
They are more than getting that. Let me tell you, Ladysmith, Wisconsin, that village is doing very well from the revenues that are generated from this plant, and it was incredible. I should post something that everybody could get an opportunity to see how well this works. They have seven 1,200 horsepower generators that run 24/7 on the methane that's generated from our waste, and it's incredible. So with that being said, I felt a little bit better about the future of the garbage industry. Outdated pharmaceuticals, I'm going to try to get some things done. Elderly people have been saying, "What do we do with our pharmaceuticals?" There isn't a written-in-stone answer yet. Don't flush them down the toilet at this point. We need to find a hospital that will take them for the village. I'm still working on it, and we'll try to come up with something. The other thing with disposal is we're going to be coming up with an issue with television sets that are obsolete, and we're getting something hammered together that we'll either have a curbside pickup or a facility, so that we will be able to get those handled. Budget discussion, I'm going to skip. Fall leaf pickup will be on November 3rd through November 5th. But the thing to remember is that November 3rd at 6:00 a.m., which is a Monday, all of your bagged leaves and yard waste must be on the curb by 6:00 a.m., because we don't know at what point they will be picking up those bags in a part of the neighborhood, so.
Is that a special run, or is that in addition, or are they doing it as they would normally do the pickup?
No, this is a special run. Yeah, absolutely. So they figured they'll need three days to do it all. So that will work out really well. The biggest issue that we've got going on-
Can I come back to that?
Oh, certainly.
Just to clarify. So they might, if I put my stuff out by 6:00 a.m. on Monday, the 3rd?
Yes.
It might get picked up on the 3rd, might be on the 4th, or it might be on the 5th?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The main thing to remember is if you put it out on the 5th, they may have already picked up your area of the neighborhood on the 3rd, and it will sit there until spring, so. Make sure that is out there.
Get it out on the 3rd.
On the 3rd at 6:00 a.m.
Good.
You have been informed. We've got a little bit of an issue with some safety issues on some homes that have been foreclosed on in the village. We don't have an answer completely yet, but I just want to assure the residents that we're working diligently on this, and now it's down to a legal issue of how we as a village can correct these issues. And Bill Nicolai, Gloria, and myself have been working diligently on this matter, and it's getting close. But, you know, just rest assured that if you're a resident and you've got a home next to you, please let us know what it is that's going on. We're doing everything we can. It's a process that just doesn't happen overnight. Do you have anything to add to that, Bill?
No, no. I would add one thing, and I think we need, longer term, to take a look at the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it basically gets down to, we're probably going to ultimately have to rewrite some ordinances to make sure that we as a village can make sure that things are not creating safety problems.
I assume there's a lot of jurisdictional issues. Is that the problem?
No, it's, the other issue is going on someone's property and making repairs. Okay.
Okay, all right.
And that is for all practical, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Mark, board?
Okay, we don't have too much either. You can look at the minutes. The only thing we need approval on is the installation in a sand blanket for the saddle mat and buckabout, which is the two pieces of playground equipment that were removed for the Village Hall addition. And we looked around and decided that we'd like to put those in Woodcrest Park, since there's already some equipment there, and they've got a nice flat area. And it, there's no cost to the, for the equipment, we just need approval for the sand blanket. It's amazing the amount you have to have for the safety zone on these equipments. And Mark estimated that it would be a cost of $800 to $1,000. So I recommend to approve the installation of the saddle mat and buckabout with the required sand blanket in Woodcrest Park at a cost not to exceed $1,000.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is that in the budget?
We have money budgeted that we can spend for parks. So yes, it's in the budget.
Okay.
Just the only-
I just have to ask?
You said an amount not to exceed $1,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The recommended motion is printed, had 100.
Oh.
I just want to make sure that when this goes into the minutes, that it's 1,000 and not 100 is stated in here.
Thank you.
Okay.
You could say 1,000.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Not to exceed 1,000.
That would be cheap sand.
Okay. So which one is it, 1,000 or 100?
1,000.
1,000, okay. All right, good. That's what my minutes will reflect.
All right. Since that's a spending, spending motion, we'll do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. George?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Mark?
Can I go back to something, Larry? Sure. In your, in the minutes for your September 8th meeting, there's a comment about the Veterans Memorial Park. And I'd like to read it to the public. Veterans Memorial Park, Ferguson said they received $88 toward the memorial during Pepperfest. He will continue to look for fundraising opportunities. He's still collecting items for the silent auction. Brian Burglin suggested he put a letter in the newspaper, Church Bulletin's VFW newsletters, and I would hope that with John here from the paper, that we can get some free publicity on this, John? Maybe we could get something in there. My comment that I, my marginal note was, needs publicity. I'm sure that there are many people who would be more than happy to make a donation for that Veterans Memorial Park if they knew that there was this need, and where to send their check, and who to make it out to. So if we can include that information, I have a feeling it would go a long way towards-
How much money is John trying to raise?
I don't remember.
I can help you with that. It's about $6,000.
$6,000.
Which the village is kind of floating for the memorial wall.
And if somebody did want to make a contribution, who would they make the check out to? So I see John getting his checkbook out, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Who would you make the check out to?
Well, that's my question. There's nothing in here that-
It's not clear.
-that says that.
Well, the money goes into the park board fund under Veterans Memorial, so I would say North Hudson Veterans Memorial Park Fund.
Okay.
Memorial Park Fund.
North Hudson Memorial Park Fund.
North Hudson Memorial Park Fund.
Probably just Veterans Memorial Fund, since it's for the wall. It's not really, originally it was going to be a Veterans Park when they were talking about putting it up elsewhere, then they moved it down here. It's more just the memorial wall, so, you know, just for memorial rather than Veterans Park, since it's in Pepperfest Park.
Okay, now tell me exactly where you want the check to-
Veterans Memorial Fund. North Hudson.
North Hudson Veterans Memorial Fund. And where would I take the check? Bring it here?
Yeah.
And that is a, considered a charitable contribution, I assume? Okay. Moving on.
Yes.
Anything else, Colleen?
No.
Okay. If not, then we'll move on. New business, I really don't- If not, then we'll move on. New business? I really don't have any new business. I would just urge people to register and vote. The elections will be coming up before we meet again. Our next board meeting is November 6th, which is two days, I believe, after the election. We meet on Thursday. Elections are on Tuesday. Gloria, do you have anything you want to add about getting registered?
Nope.
Okay. If not, we're not going to be convening and do closed session, that I'm aware of. So therefore, we don't have to reconvene.
We'll do adjourned.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll second that. The record?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. It is 7:35.